I'm going to call the meeting to order for July 31 for the Board of Supervisors. Rule call.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Foye?
Here.
And Supervisor Zaragosa?
Here. And for a moment of inspiration, we have Barry Fisher that has a PowerPoint that's he's going to share with us regarding pets and other good things that he's going to share with us and hopefully maybe after that you can help us with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Absolutely. Good morning, Board members.
Thank you.
Chair Zaragosa, Barry Fisher, Public Health. Thank you for allowing me to share a couple items with Animal Services. One is the pet pantry and food drive that we had earlier or actually last week and our recent Adopt-a-thon over this last weekend. I'd like to thank Supervisor Bennett and his staff for spearheading the pet food drive. You'll see as we go into it how successful it was. GSA for delivering all the food and Mike Powers for allowing us to spread the word about this. So, thank you all. The reason for the pet pantry is what we're seeing with this economy is a lot of people are turning in their animals because they feel they can't afford them any longer. So, what the pantry does is we want to eliminate that excuse. We want to keep the pets in their homes and the reason why we had this food drive was because we were very low on donated dry food for dogs and cats. There we go. So, as you can see in the bottom left there, that's the amount of food that was brought in just with county employees. We had over 900 pounds of both the dog and cat food and from what I hear, the food's still coming in, so we'll certainly hit the 1,000 pound mark.
You know Barry and Supervisor Bennett, they use my door to go into the and they walk in with bags and checks and so forth, so it's really working great, you know.
And Cindy Kendall's office was just about unusable.
So, as you can see, we were replenished, which was great. There's some pictures of the people, the pet pantry's open on Sundays. You can see some of the people coming in and picking up their food for the week and some happy faces. They like having that service available and it's not just pet food. It's there's pet supplies that are donated, beds, blankets, anything that has to do with the pet comes into the pet pantry. We'll go on to our this last week and our Adopt-a-thon, very successful event. It was nice actually walking through the kennel at the end of the day and seeing empty cages, so that was nice, but it's a, as you know, a short-lived victory. You know, as we're going out, we have more coming in. Few pictures there. My daughter and I, Laney, she wanted to keep me in that cage and leave without me. We had Warren Eckstein, a National Pet Show radio host that was there for Saturday and Staff and volunteers, we can't pull it off without the volunteers that we have. We need a lot more volunteers. We've really got to boost this workforce to help our staff there get the animals out the door, shown and out the door. Some more pictures of some happy families taking away new pets. What's interesting, the pet in the middle, the German Shepherd, had hip dysplasia, so which is going to require surgery, several thousand dollars worth of surgery. And what's interesting, the family that adopted him, you know, we full disclosure, hip dysplasia and usually people shy away from that. This family took it on and says, "We want this dog and we will take care of it." So, that was just incredible.
Is that a new dog down in the pond that went red?
Yeah. Yeah, so the pets were definitely happy to get out of the cages and hopping into a new home, so it was just a lot of fun. So, how'd we do? Grand total just for the weekend was 79 animals were adopted out. That doesn't include numbers from the week leading up to the Adopt-a-thon, so we're still getting those numbers, so that will be higher. As you can see, 19 dogs, 16 cats, five bunnies, five chickens, a parakeet. We do have a horse or two there if anyone's interested. And we had seven families come and reclaim their animals, which was nice. So, it was just a great day out there, a lot of fun, a lot of smiles. So, thank you again for your support. Thank you Chair Zaragosa for allowing us to bring some photos and share our week of events.
Thank you so much and I want to thank Supervisor Bennett for the food drive. It's really working, you know, it's fantastic.
Well, great job Barry and I just I just hope everybody, I wish everybody out there that has concerns could just see how hard everybody's working to try to make it happen.
Yes, very much so.
I was just sharing with Barry earlier that my son had a little poodle that he took over to my house for to babysit for two weeks and that's eight years ago, so. And I still have, I wanted to give away and my wife wanted to give me away instead of the dogs, but thank you, you know, it's really great to see the people loving those beautiful animals and thank you for for the animal shelter, you know, and agency and you, you know, for doing a good job.
Donna and her group are just outstanding, a pleasure to work with.
Yeah, thank you Barry and I and I was just going to add that I had lunch with a couple strong volunteers who just think you're doing a great job and Donna's doing a great job and really appreciates that volunteers are welcome at the shelter and just fully engaged and invited to participate.
Great.
I also had some friends that attended and one came home with a dog, but I just I think it's great, any publicity we can do, someone was saying we need to get a sign on the freeway, let people know where the shelter is. I know we're working on that, so just it's it's in a, you know, at the airport, people don't necessarily see it. I love the idea about the the pet stores and the shopping malls, you know, that are adopting the shelter animals, that it's just a lot of great work to be done and a lot of great work being done and also as Supervisor Long was saying, just our real appreciation to the volunteers and the staff, they are doing a great job.
Supervisor Foye?
Barry, you saw a lot of these great people brought in, almost like I said, a thousand pounds of food and donated their money in time to do that. How do you relate that to how many less dogs and cats are coming because people now can afford to do that? I mean, there must be.
It's kind of hard to tell because obviously you're going to have some people that come in that, you know, probably don't have a financial need to go to the pet pantry, but they're going because it's free food. So, we're going to have, see if we can do some sort of survey on, you know, that correlation. Is there a correlation with the pet pantry and keeping your pets?
Have some comparable?
Yeah, right.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I mean, people were very, very generous and it was great to see, you know, some correlation to that and that people are realizing if I give, this dog is going to live or whatever through that, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's great. Okay, thanks.
Michael?
And good job getting the notice out to the community. I heard a lot of people were aware of it, a lot of positive energy developed, so great job of that. My only question is, there was a Chihuahua named Barry, I was wondering what happened to that? They named after you?
Yes, they did. One of my first weeks there at the shelter, a Chihuahua came in and I was there and it was in a big cage by itself. It was shaking, very scared with all the barking dogs, so Donna hopped in the cage with it and got it set up in a blanket and tucked in and they named it after Mary and thankfully was adopted out last week.
Are you the felt?
Yes.
Mike Powers, did you adopt one for those two young sons you have?
Not yet, but we're getting ready for that.
Working on it.
Thank you Supervisor Long.
Don't take him, because you're going to get one.
Appreciate that.
And part of, I'd like to say, part of the outreach are New Public Information Officer Adrian Stevens. She was key in this, all these pictures and getting it out to the press, just phenomenal.
Supervisor?
Barry, was that that little dog in there shaking? Is that what you felt like when you first started working for Mike, you know? But then he showed his kind side, put a blanket around and took you in and.
You're starting to know him.
Thank you, Barry, for an excellent report again. Can you help us know with the pledge?
Yes. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the minutes, the minutes of July 17. A motion and a second. Okay, we'll go to that. And that's approved. Item number six, any agenda review, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, thank you Chair Zaragosa, just a few items. On item three, there's a PowerPoint presentation submitted, which you've already seen. Consent agenda, item 11, there's a revised board letter. Item 20, time certain agenda, item 20, there's a PowerPoint presentation submitted. Item 21, there's a letter submitted by Nathan Boren. Item 22, there's a PowerPoint presentation submitted as well as letters submitted by Ken High on the proposed tax amendments to the coastal zoning ordinance and a letter submitted by Nathan Boren as well on that item 22. On, there's also an addendum agenda, regular agenda, item 33, under Board of Supervisors, as to recommendation of Supervisors Bennett and Zaragosa to authorize the CEO to prepare a letter to the state requesting an immediate refund of the $50,000 paid by the county to keep McGrath State Beach Park open. And finally, there's addendum agenda, regular item 34, under General Services Agency regarding that Happy Camp Canyon golf course, and that's it.
Okay, and Supervisors, any changes or if not?
I want to approve the agendas amended.
Okay, we got a first and a second to approve the agendas amended. And that's approved, then we have item 17, this is consent items, agenda items 10 to 18. Any?
Move the test.
Okay, first. Let me see. We got a first and a second. First and a second by Long and Bennett. Okay, and that's approved. I don't have any public comments or any cards for any public comments, though. Okay, so. Board comments? Supervisor?
I don't have anybody to adjourn a memory, I have no comments, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'll, yes. What did I do here? What did I do with it? I have, I'll start out first with the adjourned memory. I have two from my district and one I just would like to call out, a World War II veteran, Edward Serrano from Port Roneemi. As as time moves on, we are losing these World War II veterans. This was, he was an outstanding veteran, served under General Patton, survivor, engaged with survivors of the concentration camps, received a Purple Heart and six Bronze Stars and again, that's Edward Serrano and ask that we adjourn a memory of those folks. I'd like to just briefly say, comment on the press conference and event that took place last week at Amgen, I think, or four of us there, and so we, just to comment on the effort of both the Lieutenant Governor and the Assemblymen to put in place a local coalition that will be targeted in a model to be called the Gold Team that will be proactive in trying to recruit new businesses to Ventura County, to California, but certainly to Ventura County. And just to say that I think there was a good turnout, good support, the Economic Development Collaborative leadership team was there, our CEO, Mr. Powers, was there and and I hope that collectively the effort serves us all well. I think of the Economic Development Collaborative, although majority of our focus has been on retaining businesses and helping them to expand, there's always been the interest in recruitment of new businesses to the county. And to say that in a Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation economic forecast that the state of California still ranks number nine among the globe's economies, just behind Italy and Russia, we still have a strong California. I think we have a diversity of economy. We certainly are doing, I think in every region, efforts to support and and bring along our small businesses, to incentivize them to continue to be the engine that they are in this state, but also to look at what our strengths are and focus on our strengths. And I and I know that that is certainly the intent of many who attended this event and I and I know that certainly is the the effort that's underway with the Economic Development Collaborative is to focus on our strengths and to build on them, so it was for what that's worth. I'd like to call out two other things. One is that the Oxnard-Salsa Festival on Sunday was, I attended, was a great event and I tended, of course, to cheer on Martine and to let you all know that Martine did a fabulous job. We think the voting was was, we would have liked Martine to, of course, been number one and he was number one in our hearts and I'll tell you, I have it on video and he did a great job. And he and he raised, as all of the eight contestants did, they raised money for nonprofits. And to let you know, for those of you who said, "You know, I got to vote for that Martine because he says does such a great job," you still can, up through today, and it's called the People's Choice and that means a dollar a vote and you go online to the Oxnard-Salsa Festival, you click on the dancers and and you click on Martine and $5, $10, whatever you wish to do to support the support the cause of interface and also Martine. Always appreciate it, but it was it was really great fun to be there and.
And I understand he was at People's Choice when he gave his mother that.
He was. His 93-year-old mother attended the event. It was really his family, it was really sweet and, yeah, and he started out before the dance and gave her flowers, so that was that was very nice. And I'm going to provide to the Board members, the Saturday, August 18th, because we only have this meeting and next Tuesday, is the annual Making Strides to End Breast Cancer Walk, 5K Walk, and I was in the inaugural on this, I think I've walked every one of them and it's Saturday, August 18th and it's at the Harbor Cove Beach Ventura Harbor and teams are up and running and I'm with the Pinkettes and the Striders and will provide these to you if you would, if you would, if you can, put them up in your office to encourage support, I would appreciate it and the Cancer Society and all the walkers would appreciate it. And every year it gets bigger and better and it's it's great to be in the in that harbor and walk in the morning, it's always nice and cool and get a good turnout, so appreciate you looking at posting that and encouraging support where you can. And last, I but not least, you know, I try to track most of the legislation that comes out of Sacramento and even our federal platform, as as I'm sure all of you do, but there was one I hope you didn't miss and that is the one that now, under SB 991, a runner bill allows each and every one of us as Board members to marry people. You can all, we can all be, we can all be marrying Sams and marrying Samantha's. I thought, okay. It's been obviously in the books for years for legislators and others to do that, but not for Board members, so a former legislator who is now a Board member decided that he still wanted to continue to have that and got a bill carried and that's the important things happening in Sacramento. Thank you very much and that's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
That's great news. Finally.
Finally.
It was a wonderful event to see so many leaders in the county come together for Assembly Member Gurrells and I guess Gavin, I'm thinking of his title. Lieutenant Governor coming together and particularly also that they, you have a Republican and a Democrat in this state working together on something that is so key to our recovery. So, I'm just, I was delighted to see that. We don't have enough of that bipartisan cooperation, so kudos for them. I was also able to tour the naval, our Ventura Naval Base Warfare Center yesterday and it was a great tour and seeing what they have in the facility that our, you know, our Defense Department relies on. We have something very unique out there, being able to do a missile test firing range and seeing the equipment that they have available for it and and also just realizing how important it is that they have the state-of-the-art equipment and it saves lives and it can mean all the difference to our country, so it's nice to see it there. There was a lot of emphasis too on how novel it is that they have this wonderful buffer of agriculture land around the base that will allow them to continue using the base and how important that is and vital to them that it stay that way. So, it's good to see we have a grant with VCOG that will be able to provide funds for a study, the JLU study, so I think that's over $200,000 and that will hopefully get on the way and see some easements perhaps purchased to guarantee that land stay a buffer. I also wanted to point out President Obama signed legislation awarding World War II hero Raoul Wallenberg with a Congressional Gold Medal. He's credited with saving more than 100,000 Hungarian Jews over a period of just six months. He created multiple safe houses, removing Jews from trains departing for Auschwitz, pursuing convoys carrying Jews, threatening and bribing both German and Hungarian officers, issuing forged identification papers. One of my staff members found that a friend of hers parents had some of those forged papers that saved their lives. This honor coincides with his 100th birthday, August 4th, 1912, and Wallenberg was arrested by Russian soldiers in January 1945 and his fate remains unknown. I'd also ask that we close in honor of the individual on this list and that concludes my comment.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. I had the pleasure of attending the Kingdom Center's Open House, Ventura Chamber of Commerce provided them with a new kitchen and they're doing a great job in terms of helping homeless families in the city of Ventura and they're now expanding also into Oxnard and they have some transitional youth that are also they're they're starting to take care of in Oxnard with their their center. So, I wish them well and they're, it's been fascinating to watch them grow from going down in the river bottom and trying to work with people to and now having two facilities that they're running and uniting so many churches in the county. And Friday, it was a pleasure to be there with four Board members at Jeff Gurrell's Gold Team event and I think things have been said pretty well, it's great to see a bipartisan effort, it's great to see us focus on the positive and if you're going to focus on the positive, I can't think of a better place than Ventura County to focus on the positive. You know, as climate change hits and and everything else, I think people are going to more and more recognize, you know, Haas engineering, they don't have heating or air conditioning costs, they their factory just just operates just fine like that, but with climate change coming, keeping your energy, energy demands down low is going to be great. Having the agricultural lands very close to your urban areas is going to be worth a worth a fortune. It's, there will be many advantages of Ventura County, I think, that we can point out going forward here that you're going to see as challenges. So, it's it's pointing out the good things about California and then if you have to do that, pointing out the good things about Ventura County is really, I think, going to be both pleasurable for us, but but also a great advantage over lots of other places, even in California.
We had a 20 degrees difference from Thousand Oaks to Ventura today. We have everything here in Ventura County.
That's right. We, yeah, we do and, yeah, and that and that Oxnard, you know, that 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 Oxnard location of Haas, I still remember them just talking about how much that saved them, you know, a plant like that to have that advantage. There was the annual Pre-Pride Gala Awards at the Tower Club on Saturday, the 28th and I was able to join with Supervisor Zaragosa in CAUZ's Cowcall's House Party on Sunday afternoon. I think a real good effort out there for social justice efforts here in Ventura County. Thank you and I have no adjourned memories also today.
Thank you Supervisor. And I'd also like to adjourn in memory of the one individual that I have here in the list. And I also just want to share that the salsa festival, my understanding was there was about 50,000 people in the two days and and they raised $50,000, you know, for the local charities, which and I want to thank.
So far.
So far. And I want to thank Martine for for being brave enough to, and it was just, I understand that, boy, he really got the applause, you know, from the people, when he had 92-year-old mother and and that was just fantastic too. And also, you know, it was really great to see the nonpartisan Gold Team with Assemblyman Gurrell and and I didn't realize how tall the Lieutenant Governor, my goodness, made an excellent presentation talking about partnerships, working together and to create jobs and I think it was just a great event there at Amgen. And also, I'd just like to, I know that Vida's not here, Vida Newspaper and and the BC Star are reporting the on Wright Road, the Wright Road project that we started in El Rio to pave that one half-mile road. I went over it just the other day, just to see how they're doing and my staff and I, Bill and I, went by and stopped by and the people were just absolutely happy that that road and that new asphalt's going to come through, so we don't have the kids walking in the mud when it rains and so forth, so I just, it was just great. And of course, you know, the boys are in town, the cowboys, so if you want to go to Oxnard and getting a traffic jam, go over to Vineyard Ventura. I normally take Ventura Road going home and I forgot, I said, "Oh, my God, there's a million people there visiting the cowboys" and and the cowboys do, you know, provide quite a few fundraising events for our local high schools and the cheerleaders too, they go over to the and train our cheerleaders and so forth and it's just great, you know, it's just a great venue to to help the community over in River Ridge Park. And also, like Supervisor said, I attended that CAUZ fundraiser here in Ventura and it's really how nice it is going up into the into the hills and looking down and and seeing the ocean and the and the islands from from the top of those hills, it just, you realize how beautiful it is here in Ventura, in Oxnard and Ventura County, so.
And I guess there is something that Texas likes about California, huh?
Well, let me share something with you. My daughter's going back, she's been here with me and my granddaughter for about 10 days. She's going back this morning, back to Dallas-Fort Worth and and we looked up the temperature, it's only 108 degrees, you know, so, and she really hates to go back. you know, so. And she really hates to go back.
Did you try to remember that?
Oh, the police officer?
Did you have on your list?
No, I don't. You want to go ahead?
I don't have it listed.
I don't. There's a police officer that I'm not sure if it was in my district or your district. But I will.
Why don't we do that next week so that we can really acknowledge her? Thank you.
Okay. And that's all I have. Michael?
Just real quick. Thank you, Chair. Some great news to share with your board and the county is that the statewide airport executive association has named our very own Todd McNamee as Airport Executive of the Year. So it's a wonderful honor and something we already know, right? But it's nice that the state association recognized it. So.
That is outstanding.
It's a wonderful recognition and well deserved.
What's that?
Considering his challenges, he's.
Yeah, that's right. Great job.
That's great.
Okay. Well, thank, I think we had a great weekend, all of us, you know. And a lot of things are happening here in Ventura County. So we live in a great county. And like my daughter says, gosh, yeah, he used to go back to Fort Worth. Okay, our next item is 27. Item 27. This is an appointment to Suzanne and Williams to the Fire Protection District. This is, what's the, Mark?
Good morning, Chair Zaragosa, members of the board. Mr. Powers, for the record, Mark Lorenzen, Chief of the Ventura County Fire Protection District. Before your board today is a request to name two appointments to the district's Board of Appeals, William Klepper and Suzanne Sweet. This is going to be a two-year appointment. Any questions?
Any, we got a first?
Two of them.
And a second?
Very lean six.
Yep. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That's approved.
Nice to see there's also terms before there were term limits and people stayed for a really long time.
Okay. And then we have item 29 from the DA's office.
28.
Oh, 28, excuse me. I'm really going backwards here. Item 28.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Brian Rafelson, and I supervise the Ventura County District Attorney's Office's Real Estate Fraud Unit. And the item before you is the ratification and acceptance of grant funds from the Attorney General's Recovery Crisis Fund. It was a one-time settlement, and we were successful in getting those grant application funds. Our real estate fraud unit started in 2005 with one investigator and one prosecutor. We've grown since then. We've seen, we saw 27 investigations in 2006, 159 investigations in 2011. That has increased since the crisis in housing occurred in 2008. And we've seen no end of the ways people have tried to fraudulently take money from victims, especially in, in areas such as foreclosure rescue scams and mortgage rescue areas. Our successful prosecution efforts, these funds are vital to continue those efforts. We have been at the forefront of providing public information through PSAs in the media, through town hall events in Oxnard, through public access television. We also are very aggressive in our prosecutions of these mortgage rescue thieves. In fact, this morning, two of our prosecutors are in court on the biggest mortgage investment fraud case we have seen, a real estate investment scam involving Ken Powell and Katie Rose, $3 million in excess of $3 million of losses to victims in that case. And they're expected to be sentenced this morning. Our real estate fraud efforts need this money to continue. We received in 2009 a federal grant, and those grant monies were for three years. Those grant monies expired in, or basically were exhausted in the early part of this year, in about April. And so this money, we were fortunate, will pay for one investigator, one prosecutor, and one bilingual investigative assistant. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And you not just want to share and thank you. I understand that REFAT is also supporting this, the Board of Realtors?
REFAT is not only supporting this, but REFAT has been vital. That is one of the things you may have read in the paper recently about our successful program. And we have been a model for other counties. And it's our close collaboration with the real estate fraud professional communities that makes it unique.
And I want to thank the DA's office. Supervisor Long and I had the mortgage fraud town hall meeting in Oxnard that really helped us tremendously, too, you know. And, and those few dollars are going to help us in the investigation. And it's just outstanding that people know now that you're going to be there.
We're on the map.
Exactly right.
Well, and I think that's the important part. The bad guys know that, that this county is very aggressive and pro, and, and successful at prosecution. And we have another wave of foreclosures headed our way, this shadow inventory. And with that will come additional scammers. And I just, I think the, your, the district attorney and the entire team has done an outstanding job in being very assertive and, and going after it. So appreciate the outstanding work and appreciate that we're able to get these grant dollars to do it.
We certainly appreciate the board's support.
Supervisor Parks?
I, I have two questions. And it's wonderful that you've been able to increase the prosecutions as a result. The funding for this, you're talking about because of the settlement with Mozilla and all, is that any relationship to the fact that Ventura County gets the funds? Or is that statewide?
It's a statewide, that grant was a statewide grant. It's a one-year, there was $6.5 million available. It's a one-year grant.
We don't make out for having him in our county. The other question that I had is, do you see any, the caseload, if it also has a corresponding increase in caseload with the Public Defender's Office in this type of crime? Because often, you know, that's, we also fund the Public Defender's Office. And I was just wondering if this is equivalent to what you generally see with this, you know, in comparison to the other cases that you have.
It's, in general, if there's an increase in our caseload, there would tend to be an increase in the Public Defender's caseload.
Just, just as this, this is no different than any others than that?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. And thank the DA for the good work. And your staff, Michael and Peter?
No, I just, I appreciate what, what you're doing. And, you know, the idea that you guys are willing to work that hard for the community. I mean, there's a lot of other things you can do, but this is so important for the average person who sees government working for them when something happens. So thanks so hard for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Michael?
Well, and it was an innovative program that you started. So you've really pioneered this. Great job. And happy 50th birthday. Boy, do you know how to celebrate it.
You got me. Thank you.
And I just, and I just wanted to say that, that the area where there are experts that prey on people that are amateurs, and that's what you really have in real estate fraud. You have people that are in the business all the time, dealing with people that only enter into these kind of transactions, maybe once every 25 or 30 years. You really need a district attorney's office like that looking out for those people. So thank you very much.
It's a great point, Supervisor, because it really is, you're getting people when they're down, in a very distressed economy. And people have saved their entire lives for a house. And they're looking for help. And what do they get? They get ripped off.
That's right.
It's terrible.
Well, thank you tremendously. And thank the DA.
Thank you.
Supervisor Zaragosa?
Yes, sir.
Count my adjourned memories. I have my, that's the board adjourned memory. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All righty.
It is five of them, I'm sure.
What, what happened?
This one got dropped off the roster.
Okay. All right.
It's five of them.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you. Okay. Item 29.
I move approval that we appoint Janice Gardner to the Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Okay. Second.
This is the regular citizen public member.
Okay. And that's approved. And item 30, I also recommend that we appoint Shirley Dove to the Area Board Night on Disabilities. Okay. Item 30. Okay. And that's approved. Now we, item 31.
I move that we appoint Dana Eaton to the Alcohol Drug Advisory Board.
Okay.
Or I will move in a moment. There we go.
Okay. And that's approved. Then we have item 32, Correspondence.
Move to Recede and File.
Got a second. And then, that's approved. Then item 33. And this is the McGrath Park. And I'd like to start off with Supervisor. But we, one of the things that I'm recommending here is that we authorize the, this is to refund the $50,000 paid to the State of California by the County of Ventura to keep McGrath Park open. And this is to authorize the County Exec's office and the Chair of Board of Supervisors to sign a letter to the State of California requesting an immediate refund of the $50,000 paid by the County of Ventura for McGrath State Beach Park Sewer Project. And number two, to Red County Exec's office and the County Council to explore any other options that may be available to recover the $50,000. And as you know, more than a year ago, you know, the, the State of California was contemplating the closing of the park, and they needed $50,000 to, excuse me, $500,000 to, to put a new sewer line. So immediately, we started working on the project to fix that. And Supervisor Bennett and I got together with Assemblyman Das Williams and, and others, you know, to keep that project, that park open. And we had quite a few people helping us out, like the friends of the Channel Islands Coast State Park, Melissa Maffa. And also, we had City Core help us out. We had the Girl Scouts help us out. We had Southern California Gas, Michelle Pettis help us out. We had the city of Oxnard, we had Cindy Crawford, not the movie star, but Cindy Crawford from Los Angeles, Victoria Borgensen from Oxnard High School, and a multitude of other people helping us out to, to keep this park open. And a lot of children, you know, are putting their nickels and dimes, you know, together to, to help us keep the park open. So we raised the, the half million dollars, and we fixed the park. And we had the grand opening just a couple of months ago. And now we find out that, that there's $54 million that, $55 million that the state parks have. And I personally believe that we were blindsided on this, on this effort. And, and we were contributing monies that, that we probably could have used in, in other efforts. And the State of California has this $54 million. So I'm asking that, that, that we ask the State of California to refund these dollars as, as soon as possible. And I had a call from, from the interim state parks individual that said that she wants to work with us. And I didn't have a time, any time to call her, but yes. And my staff got a, talked to her, and I, I didn't have a chance to call her back that, that she will hopefully work with us on that. So at this time, I'd like to ask, you know, that hopefully that we then direct our CEO to write a letter and for the chair to sign to ask for a refund to, to get our money back. Mr. Bennett?
It's just, I mean, it's just unfortunate what we've said all along years ago. We want to build trust in government. And you can do 999 things right, and one thing like this, and bang, you know, it sets you back, and you have to start over again. And this really is, it comes down to just a trust issue. The community stepped forward, trusting that the park was going to close, that their funds weren't there. And to find this, it's unfortunate. And I hope people don't translate this into the efforts of so much that goes on in government that is well, well-intentioned and hardworking and upfront and, and all that. So it's the right thing to do to point this out. The silver lining of all this, though, is it did reveal the real support that was out there for McGrath State Beach and the fact that the community would, would come together. So for that, McGrath State Beach will benefit in the long run.
And, and I know that we have other comments, but this is used by the entire county, especially now with the hot days, you know, they, we get people coming in from Simi Valley, from Thousand Oaks, from other areas, or Ojai, LA, and so forth. And they just love the cool breeze, you know, and, and just to camp out. And, and you're really within the city, and, and it feels like you're out of the city when you're in the.
Yeah. So I'm happy to second the motion. Thank you.
And when I was at the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, I made a statement last week that, you know, this money should be returned. But then I start thinking about the, particularly the individuals that, the nonprofits, the individual contributions, and those, you feel like they should be like first in line. But they did that because they, as you say, felt very strongly about their park system. One thought that I might have it, that I do have, is that that money be returned and be used for our parks. And that you look at McGrath, if we, if, because they couldn't pay for that sewer, they were going to lose money. Otherwise, it's a sustainable park. So the idea of perhaps wording the letter that we're looking at using that to continue to keep our parks or, and help our parks to become sustainable, that seems like a more, more of that nexus. And I know some $20 million is really what we're talking about, not the whole $54 million, because it's the Off-Road Fund. But I, I think that would be, you know, have, continue that nexus and, and continue the basis for the funds to begin with. So that, that's what I'd like to see added into the letter.
Supervisor Long?
Well, my question was that we also would follow up with this letter the CEO is going to draft to our legislative delegation. I would have to think, I hadn't looked at it close enough to see if they're going to, how they are going to approach this through the legislatures, if they're going to, you know, take a look at what occurred here. I would hope so, so that the public trust is restored, to make sure that there's a full tracking. And then how they are going to help the local jurors, well, us, because it's our park, but to correct this. So to make sure the legislative delegation gets a letter. I guess that's my point. So.
Let me share something. Over at the MGM, I was talking to Assemblymember Correll, and he says he's going to try and help us in this, with this issue, too. So, so he's going to get back to us and see how, you know, how that money's going to come back if, and what, what options we have. Supervisor? Okay, okay.
Would it, would it be okay with the maker of the motion that you do include the option of having it used for parks here in Ventura County, the monies that we would get refunded?
What's, we, we, I, I, you know, it's, it'd be, it's a good use. Or, let's look at it. How about?
Two different things. One letter is we're sending.
One letter we're sending out to, to the, to Sacramento, the other letters to give direction to.
I guess, yeah.
Well, there's no question, our parks can use the money. I don't want to say no. And then I want to say in Stecco Park first, so.
And again, if, if that money will help Stecco become self-sustainable, I think that's kind of the measure that we could use on these.
You know, and I think Supervisor says something important. McGrath Park is self-supporting. What we needed in McGrath was just the capital. But the economic benefit is really, really great for, for, for the community.
I, I certainly support, support the money go into the parks. I think in reality, I don't think we're going to get the straight refund like this. I think what we're going to get is a pledge to fund the parks for X number of years or something along those lines.
That's a possibility.
So, but, but I think it, I think it's certainly.
If that's, I wouldn't.
Certainly is appropriate for us to, to do that.
Mr. Chair, the auditor has a plug in there. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have, yeah.
Because I asked her, well, at our Rotary meeting, a group asked, how could this happen? And she had, she gave a very good.
Oh, there are many, many possibilities here. I'm just concerned if the, the state cuts a refund check, this did come out of the general fund. And would it return to the general fund and you establish a, a reserve to make a contribution to the parks? Or do you want it to go directly to parks? I'm not sure where you want it deposited.
Michael?
So that needs to be fine tuned.
And, and what, what I'm suggesting is it may come back as specifically a grant to parks, for parks. So I don't know if it necessarily would then be a general fund.
We could probably have Michael look at that when it could, Michael.
I will. If and when we receive the funding, we could bring it back to your board and have you dedicate it to parks. Then, sort of state that intent. Now, I didn't know if you wanted to include that as part of the letter, or that's more, once we, if we get the funds, then we'll dedicate it to parks.
So at this point, it's just an intent?
Right.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. And we have Steve Hints. And we have Steve Hints wanting to speak, I don't see him in, but he supports it anyway. Okay, so we have a first and a second with that amendment, the direction. Okay, thank you, then. We have item thirty-four. And thank you so much for the support of McGrath.
Morning, Chair Zaragosa, members of the board. Mr. Powers, my name is Greg Bergman from the General Services Agency. And just to piggyback on item thirty-three very quickly, I can guarantee you that we do not have fifty-four million dollars hidden anywhere. The item before you this morning, item thirty-four, is a request to waive one of the provisions of the Rustic Canyon lease agreement. They currently have the opportunity through an SBA loan to significantly reduce the interest rates that they're paying on their capital construction loan. The article in the lease states that there can only be one indebtedness. There are two right now, however, one of those is grandfathered into the lease as it was a capital construction charge in order to get water to the facility. So this item is simply asking that we waive that component of the lease so that we can move forward with the SBA loan. That SBA loan, by the way, requires that one of the, that the fifty percent of the, that the first trust deed must be fifty percent from a banking institution, and then the SBA loan will piggyback on the rest of that loan and get a favorable interest rate.
Okay, any questions?
I'll move then.
Okay, we got a first and a second.
Thanks for working that out so we can keep these people, find their ways to make it cheaper for them to do what they do.
Helps us both out.
Yeah.
And that's approved, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is a closed session item, and, and are we going to have any...
There may be an announcement.
We are.
Maybe.
Okay, so we're going to the closed session. Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting back to order, and we have an announcement from our county council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers, my associate Bertha Lopez, the treasurer tax collector, Steve Hints. First of all, on interest rates, the Federal Open Market Committee meeting is taking place today and tomorrow, and if you're looking for any increase in rates, the latest prediction would be about 2015. Unless something big happens like an oil embargo, we're going to keep these rates low. That's what the market interprets and hears. To let you know what I'm doing, in one year, the rate is only point-two-one, two years is point-two-seven, and the highest rated security I can buy is point-four-three. That's three years. In regard to the economy, inflation is under control, energy prices are dropping, unemployment will come out this Friday, it should be better than the last month, which you were reading about in this board letter. At least, the market's anticipating a better non-farm payroll number. Real estate has hit a trough, in my opinion, nationally. In some places, it's recovering more than others, especially in areas of California, like Ventura County. So that's going to be a long haul, though, because we dug ourselves nationally into a big hole. Stock market looks good, there's no place really to put money in the bond market, so that's going to continue an upward trend. That's good for all of our IRAs and those type of investments. Europe will still be in the headlines, depending on what the situation is, and drive the market up and down. Other than that, there really isn't much to say, rates are going to stay low.
So right now's a good time to refi if you have the equity, right?
I really think it is. I really think it is. And as far as levels go in this community, I just don't see them dropping down. I mean, you might see one listing that goes lower, but the range is really at a buying opportunity.
Exactly right.
You're still outperforming your benchmarks.
I'm still about thirty basis points ahead of Leith, which is not my benchmark, but I keep an eye on them because everybody else does.
Hey, Bob, I just asked a real quick question. I'm looking at one of your graphs, it gives you monthly balances. Usually, over all the years, you've been, you know, June to June, July to July, they're pretty always even. This one's like two-hundred-million-dollar difference.
Uh huh.
Is there, you know, it's more people pulling money out to schools, whatever needs the money, or what sort of, we just, something different?
Well, what the State of California is doing in June is deferring the school payment over the fiscal year. So we got our school payment for June in July.
Oh, okay.
Now, some people might say they're kind of helping their books along and then passing it on to us. I don't know the reason. But we did get our money, but we got it after the fiscal year, so I was short, and that's why I sold a couple of things right at the end. So they're in good shape and everything, they just deferred it, and then we got our normal July payment. So that, along with, there's just less money around nowadays. So if you're looking year over year, every month, it's starting to drop a little.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions? Okay, so the first and a second.
Have a nice summer off when it starts for you.
And your assistant, you know, thank you, and the judge.
One question for you. You said Leith is not your benchmark, so what is your benchmark?
Fed funds and the ninety-day bill. Because when you start using a benchmark that's another portfolio, they're never the same. And you could have go back to Orange County, where I was told by certain people, why aren't you matching Bob Citron? He's a point higher than you. So at that point, I didn't look as good as he did, but eventually, we all know what happened.
You weren't better.
No, I didn't. So, but the ninety-day bill and Fed funds are what the cost of borrowing is for the Treasury in the overnight market and the ninety-day bill market. So that really is a fair benchmark, because, one quick example, and I'll go, I know you've got a busy day. When we had the oil embargo, Fed funds, which are now practically at zero percent, were twenty percent. So that gave you an idea of where Treasury should be, and they were between sixteen and twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Bob. Okay, our next item's item twenty, and, oh, that, by the way, that's approved. That's approved, and item twenty is a recommendation by Supervisor Bennett Zaragosa to recede and file a draft model single bag use. Brian?
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragosa. I'm going to kick this off, then you're going to make some comments, and then we'll have Mr. Brennan. But for the benefit of the board and for the public that's not aware of it, Beacon, Supervisor Zaragosa and I sit on the Beacon Board, and Beacon has requested that all of the member agencies of Beacon participate in a regional EIR on single-use plastic bags, so that everybody doesn't have to go do their own EIR out there. If, in fact, we were going to do our own EIR, it costs us about sixty-five thousand dollars. If we do this as part of the member agencies, we're talking about eight thousand dollars per member, so a fifty-five thousand dollar savings. It certainly makes sense. Los Angeles County approved an environmental impact report similar to this, and we have a PowerPoint presentation that Mr. Brennan's going to do. One of the things I wanted to do is just welcome the fact that we haven't had a chance to talk about Beacon very much, and it's a way to sort of reintroduce Beacon to people that maybe have forgotten about Beacon and its membership, et cetera. The other thing I'd like to point out is that when we do hear from Mr. Brennan, he serves as the Beacon's executive director, but he serves pro bono. He does that voluntarily, and that's just one extra duty that he takes on, and it's something that he should be complimented for. So Supervisor Zaragosa?
Yeah, and also, I'd like to share that I've belonged to the JPA for, as a council member for many, many years, and we have Galida, Senate...
$8,000 per member, so $55,000 savings. It certainly makes sense. Los Angeles County approved an environmental impact report similar to this. And we have a PowerPoint presentation that Mr. Brennan's going to do. One of the things I wanted to do is just welcome the fact that we haven't had a chance to talk about Beacon very much. And it's a way to sort of reintroduce Beacon to people that maybe have forgotten about Beacon and its membership, et cetera. The other thing I'd like to point out is that when we do hear from Mr. Brennan, he serves as Beacon's executive director, but he serves pro bono. He does that voluntarily. And that's just one extra duty that he takes on, and it's something that he should be complimented for. So Supervisor Zergosa?
Yeah, and also I'd like to share that I belong to the JPA as a consul member for many, many years. And we have Galida, Santa Barbara, Carpinteria, Oxnard, Ventura, and Port Weneme that are part of this JPA that's really helped us out tremendously. And this EIR that we're looking at, or the SECA document we're looking at, all those individuals are going to be taking that, this particular issue, to their city consuls and to the Board of Supervisors in Santa Barbara, just to share that.
And certainly, this is one of those things that coastal communities have a great interest in, and that is, plastic bags getting into our watershed, ending up in our ocean, ending up in our river bottom. You can go down to the Ventura River Bottom now, and you can see more plastic bags than you would ever want to see down there. And it is an issue. And it's also something that I want to point out. The funding for this EIR work would come from our Watershed Protection District, TDML, because we have to try to decrease the amount of solid waste that we're finding in the river, finding in the ocean. It's certainly an appropriate step for us to move forward. So coastal communities across the board are looking at this. This is the first step for us to be able to do something. We're not passing an ordinance today, but we're trying to get this important EIR work done, so that all the coastal communities can take a look at this and make their decisions about this. Thank you very much.
And also, Supervisor, one of the benefits, and I'm sure that I'm not taking your presentation or thunder away, but the important thing here is that we're sharing the cost. And all the cities are going to be able to use SECA documents, so they don't have to reinvent the wheel and pay for the total $70,000, $80,000 that it's going to cost. So I think it's important to understand that before.
Great. Well, thank you, Honorable Chair, and members of the board. Do you have any questions? Thank you. That was basically the gist of what we're here to talk about. But I do want to thank you for the opportunity to maybe just showcase Beacon a little bit. And it's the member agencies, it's County Santa Barbara, the County of Ventura, and the coastal cities in those counties. And basically, it deals with sediment management issues and the nearshore environment. And that leads to both water quality and other such things as trash. As we all know, that before this board, in fact, all our regulatory boards, we're seeing more and more from the Water Quality Control Board, TMDLs, the allowable amount of trash that can be in our creeks and in our rivers. And a lot of that comes from our streets and from our storm drains and into those creeks. So I just wanted to let you know that this is a wonderful opportunity to partner. So let me see if this goes forward. There we go. It's a joint powers agency established in 1992 by both former members of this board, Supervisor John Flynn, and the wonderful, just passed away, Naomi Schwartz in Santa Barbara. They realized Naomi and John were on the Coastal Commission together at the same time, realized what they did in Santa Barbara affected the coastal sediment transfer down here, all the way down to Point Mugu. So anything they did in Santa Barbara, that sand taken out of the system meant there was less sand for Ventura County. It just basically, the sand starts at Point Concepcion, works its way down river, sand all the way down this coast into a submarine canyon right off of Point Mugu, and about 90% of that sand is lost into the submarine canyon. So anything we do along that stretch affects some of the cities that are basically downstream, perhaps, of that sand. So that's why this organization was created, to make sure that we're all talking on the same page. So that, let's see, there we go. Key objectives: maintenance and erosion control, nourishment through use of trapped sands and sediments, offshore sand deposits. You know, I came in front of this board not too long ago and talked about the sand that was sequestered there by Caygus Creek. That sand and sediment used to belong in the system, but now is not in the system. So a lot of times, when you touch sand in the sediment basins and things like that, you basically have to almost treat it like a hazardous material, and have to have it treated, tested in a number of things. And it's basically interrupting the flow to the coast. And so when you look at what our coastline, and by the way, 52% of the coastline of Ventura County is armored, and that means it has rocks and sediment and things in front of it that allow, that's basically not a natural coastline, and also cuts down on the amount of erosion that that coastline could create. A normal set of erosion that would continue the river of sand, which obviously protects the property, both private property and a lot of our public properties. You were talking about McGrath Beach earlier. That's one of the areas also that suffers from some of that. So basically, and also, we talk about basically the ocean water quality. So that's why we're talking today. At least 15 municipalities in California today are considering adopting bag bans. There was a statewide initiative filed in 2010. The Manhattan Beach ruling basically stated from the Supreme Court that small cities individually by themselves, a city like we've seen in Carpinteria, we've seen the City of Manhattan Beach, City of Ojai, and our own county, have been able to pass a ban within their own city and not have to do an EIR or some SECA review, just because they're small and have a very limited amount of stores. As we grow as a county or as a number of cities in the same county, if they started to do a ban, that would obviously count for an accumulative effect. So that would need to have some SECA review. And then the LA County EIR, which Supervisor Bennett just alluded to. We do have, the Board of Beacon's membership just asked myself and other members to bring this to the boards of their jurisdictions for concurrence on going forward with an opportunity to partner. I would say that this item will be in front of the City of Ventura next Monday night. It's scheduled to be in the City of Galida on September 11. And we're presently working on getting it agendized in the City of Oxnard and the City of Port Weneme. So that basically tells you a little bit of the progress to date. I'll just skip through that. Basically, I would just say that the County of Santa Barbara agreed to be part of a joint effort. The City of Santa Barbara just recently did the same. We held off. We took, the City of Santa Barbara has the most up-to-date language of any ordinance. So in terms of being, whether being sued, or in terms of really addressing the true issues, the Santa Barbara one is the latest one to come out, and that's why we held off. And we're using that as a model ordinance to create a project and create an EIR on. And speaking of the EIR, I have Matt Maddox from Rincon Consulting here today, if there are any questions for him also.
Let me, oh, it's going to, go ahead, go ahead.
I know. And you have a number of speakers, so if there are any other questions after, I'd be happy.
What's going to ask our consultant, Matt? Matt, where's Matt? Matt, is there any other counties that are now contemplating or have passed this type of ordinance?
Sure. We're actually in the process of preparing a draft environmental impact report. It's actually out for review right now until August 6 for the County of San Mateo. That includes the entire County of San Mateo, unincorporated area, as well as all, I believe, 24 incorporated cities within that jurisdiction. And included in that, it's kind of a similar EIR to what this one would end up being. It's also looking at six cities in Santa Clara County that have also joined on to participate in that EIR process. So it's a programmatic level environmental impact report.
Is the City of LA doing this already?
The City of LA is also in the process of doing their own EIR. They're doing it in-house in the Public Works Department.
That's major, that's big.
That's a big one. The County of LA EIR did a similar approach. They included all 88 incorporated cities in the county's EIR in their analysis for each city to follow up and do their own adoption of an ordinance. Some cities, such as Long Beach and City of Calabasas, Pasadena, have already come out and adopted the findings of that EIR. So it'd be a similar approach for both the cities in Beacon to utilize the analysis in this EIR and adopt the same findings in a similar ordinance.
And that's basically what we're doing here, right?
That's correct.
Any other questions? I have some speakers here, and I have, I'm going to go three minutes, and then we can go ahead and see if they have any questions. Okay, the first speaker is Robert Davison, followed by Mr. Turley. Davison, three minutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm a 37-year resident of the county and city of Ventura. I was married here. I raised a family here. And I'm here today to address this issue because I care about the city of Ventura, and I care about litter. We're asking you to join 49 other California cities and counties which have already adopted single-use bag ordinances. This includes the City of Ojai, Carpinteria, Calabasas, as well as the City of Los Angeles and the County of Los Angeles. Alameda County and its 14 cities have also passed an ordinance. San Luis Obispo County recently used another vehicle to have a regional EIR and have all of their cities and the county in San Luis Obispo included in a bag ordinance. Now, you say, "Why do we need a bag ordinance?" Well, the average shopper uses about 500 bags per year. Only 5% of those are ever recycled. Plastic bags don't biodegrade. They're with us forever, in one form or another. They cause a visual blight. And most importantly, they're unnecessary. We don't have to live with this. Now, you say, "What about a voluntary approach? We'll just ask the citizens to do it." Well, LA County tried that several years ago. They said, "We'll try, we'll encourage everybody to bring reusable bags, and if nothing happens in two years, we'll pass an ordinance." Well, as you've already heard, they have their own ordinance because the voluntary compliance didn't work. What we are asking you to do today is to take the first step designed to change people's habits, to cause them to bring reusable bags. This doesn't take away anybody's liberty to use a reusable bag. It only prevents the quote-unquote "free distribution" of them at point of sale. Anybody can go out and buy a bag that they want to use and bring it to the store, whether it's plastic or not. So we're not stepping on anybody's individual liberty to use plastic bags. But what has been found is that when people are forced to think about plastic bags, and particularly forced to think about them in the economics of their own pocketbook, they will go for a reusable bag. What this ordinance does is simply ban the use of, ban, I'm sorry, ban the free distribution of single-use plastic bags and put a 10 cent on a paper bag. So we're here today to ask you to take this proposal, which is a fiscally responsible answer to this question. And it solves the problem of litter, it protects the environment and our oceans, which is our best neighbor. There are several other people here today that I think share this same sentiment, and I would simply ask them to stand up at this time if you agree in support of the single-use bag ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Davison, and thank you, Hal, for being here. Okay, Peter Turley, followed by Penny Owens.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Peter Turley. I've been a five-year resident of Ventura, California. I do support this feature ordinance on single-bag use, and I do support the EIR. Whenever I go out on walks, my morning walks around my neighborhood, I see plastic bags all along the sidewalk and in the ground. And I try to pick them up, but there's just way too many. It's just really disgusting. And so it is a blight on the neighborhood. And we all know that litter in neighborhoods do bring your property values down and detract from tourist dollars. Also, when plastic bags flow out to the ocean, turtles think that they're jellyfish, and they suffocate on them and die. So it'd be really important for the county to be a leader on environmental friendliness and sustainability by adopting this EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Penny Owens, followed by Lee Sherman.
Good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisor. My name's Penny Owens, and I'm the education coordinator with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. And as you may know, Channel Keeper works to protect and restore the Santa Barbara Channel and its watersheds. And here, our watersheds all flow out to the Pacific Ocean. And given our close proximity to the Channel Islands National Marine Sanctuary, we have a special responsibility to protect our marine environment. The Channel Islands National Marine Sanctuary is one of just 13 sanctuaries in the entire nation. Channel Keeper and our constituents are extremely concerned about the environmental impacts of single-use bags. And we have long advocated our local municipalities to enact an ordinance to reduce the use of disposable shopping bags along the South Coast. This cost-shared approach for the EIR is a wonderful opportunity to help decrease the cost to each individual municipality for conducting the EIRs, which unfortunately are necessary due to the threatening tactics of the Save the Plastic Bag Coalition. With 40 jurisdictions throughout California taking action to stem the tide of plastic pollution, we strongly encourage the County of Ventura to act by also supporting the regional EIR and also ultimately adopting a bag ordinance. We respectfully urge you to allocate a prorata contribution to the EIR for single-use bag ordinances. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, Lee Sherman, followed by Bill Heidman.
Actually, I'm here for item 21. I support item 20, but I'm not prepared to speak on it.
I got 20 and 21, but you also want to speak on?
21, I remember.
All right. And Bill?
Hello, my name is Bill Hickman. I'm a resident here in Ventura. I'm with the Surf Rider Foundation. Thank you for considering this important issue. What's proposed here today is an easy way to get involved with a persistent litter problem throughout Santa Barbara and the world, really. What Beacon is doing is a lot of the legwork, and by joining in with other municipalities, you can save lots of money on the EIR process. This is just the first step in the process, and we encourage you to move forward. Mr. Davidson and others, you know, are stating a lot of good points, so I don't want to take up a lot of time. Please approve this item today. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. And we have Lawrence Manson?
Larry Manson.
Manson, I want to apologize. Your writing's like mine.
Just back from, just back from.
That's my speech. Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for considering this issue. My dad was an Air Force officer. We lived in Europe for three years when I was a kid. And I'm a retired historian from Ventura College. And I remember very well going to markets with our bags and collecting our provisions going home. In the 1970s, 80s, and 90s, really what happened in not just the industrialized world, but all over the world, was the increasing use of single-use plastic bags. My wife and I just returned from travel in Australia, Morocco, and Western Europe. And it's very interesting to me to see how the attitude of people, oh, really, in those areas anyway, I can't speak to South America, how those attitudes have changed. And in fact, there's some sort of, in some cases, rivalry between cities in Australia over who gets credit for passing the first banning of single-use plastic bags. So I commend you today for considering funding this EIR. I think it's important for us to join the rest of the world in changing attitudes, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. That's the last speaker I have. Is there anyone else I'd like to speak on this item? If not, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to say that it's a partnership both between the members of Beacon, but also the nonprofit community has come forward. We received a grant from the Orfola Foundation. Paul Orfola and his wife have taken this as a personal interest. It's one of the issues that they personally see as a problem. We've had also some other opportunities for some grants to be added on to what the membership creates. So I just wanted to say, and that's what we're asking you today, and on the words, maybe a little stronger word than endorse, and that would be maybe to approve spending upwards of $8,000 in regards to this item. We will be going to the other boards, and we will be able to assess the, with the other grant money put into the fund, we'll be able to assess exactly what those dollar amounts will be, but it will be no greater than $8,000.
So if I could point out, and thank you very much, so today's step is the necessary first step for us to take if we want to eventually be able to ban this use. And it's also the necessary first step for all the other Beacon members to be able to move forward. Recommendations one and two that we have here establish the Beacon Model Bag Ordinance as the project for the purpose of the EIR. We can modify that later if we choose to, but that's the model at this point in time. And as Mr. Brennan pointed out, Santa Barbara has spent a lot of time researching it, trying to make sure that they've addressed all the legal issues. And that's sort of an evolving field, and so it's good that we have the most current ordinance out there. Recommendation number three is to endorse the county stormwater program funding from the TRASH TDML. And the Public Works Directors determined that this is an eligible expense that they could support for this. This agreement was drafted by the Santa Barbara County Council's office, so that you're aware of that. And overall, it's a great program for regionalism and cost reduction, collectively saving taxpayers' money as we move forward. And this is the kind of collaboration that Beacon was actually created to engage in. And this is exactly what Beacon is out there for. We all share this coastline. We all share some watersheds that are really important. And single-use plastic bags are a problem in our watersheds that we have to deal with. Thank you very much. I make a motion that approves the recommended action.
Just to add to, I believe it's good government working together, you know, sharing the SECA cost, you know, and also...
and also, one of the things that the supervisor mentioned is that the TMDLs are going to be really expensive, and we need to take care of that, so this is going to help us tremendously. It's a mandated item that Public Works has to work with, you know, the TMDL. So I think it's an assistance to that, to work with that.
Mr. Chair, if I might add -- excuse me.
Supervisor Long has a question.
Actually, I wanted to ask Mr. Kapusik to speak to that TMDL issue, to just give a little more detail around it, because we certainly are hearing no of the discussions from the state level down to the regional boards and then to us and our whole watershed experiences.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. Mr. Chairman and Mr. Powers, members of the board, for the record, Gerard Kapusik from Ventura County Watershed Protection District, and standing in for David Fleisch, who is over at Satacui today, working our folks through a variety of issues. So yes, you absolutely focus on the key point. It's clear that from many presentations to your board that we are facing a suite of challenges in meeting the TMDL. I suppose depends on point of view, whether it's a good or bad thing that we have the challenges, but one thing that is good is that we can help define the solutions to the challenges. And so this is a creative leveraging of a small amount of TMDL dollars that may have a large amount of benefit. And certainly in the context of regional and partnering and collaboration, this is critical. So we welcome the opportunity to customize our suite of programs. Joined by Evelina Mutkovskar, County Unincorporated Stormwater Manager, and we are looking forward to helping do this. So I think it's a great move, and we welcome the opportunity to support it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I have another question, if I might.
Yes, of course.
One, I appreciate that we're doing this with a coalition under Beacon. Very appropriate. Served on Beacon my first term and learned a significant amount about beach replenishment and obviously the great value we have as a coastal county. Question on the environmental document, will it do the economic analysis of the impact of --
So Matt.
-- of plastic bag containment or abolishment?
The EIR does not have economic analysis. It's outside the purview of SEQA. We do take into consideration some aspect of that, but there is no economic analysis that's built into the environmental analysis.
And those counties and cities, would you know, that have already passed this and haven't been challenged, I see there's some litigation in some areas, did they do economic analysis?
As usually as part of a staff report, they might include some qualitative assessment, but in terms of any cost-benefit analysis or any further economic analysis, that's not included. I will say that generally, we've seen in the communities that we've worked with, some backing by some of the major grocery association and some of the local businesses. Some small businesses have been somewhat against it as it is a change of their common practices. So we've heard from both sides, and that analysis will provide in a qualitative sense, but it's outside the purview of the SEQA document to actually get into the cost-benefit or the deep economic analysis.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Brian?
Mr. Brennan, maybe you can give me an update. What was the lawsuit in Carpinteria? What was there?
Excuse me?
The lawsuit in Carpinteria?
Oh, in Carpinteria. That was the deal with the restaurant bags. They had baited inclusive all the restaurants as part of that. They removed that from their ordinance, and their case has been settled.
Okay. But it was just only the restaurants?
The restaurants.
It was. And to answer the question about economics, in the ordinance, there's places where specifically, for instance, if folks are on the different programs, Food Share or those kind of state programs, they pay with the debit card, they are exempt from some of those of the cost. Those bags are available to them at no cost. So that can be allowed into the ordinance when it comes back to you if you decide at that time you want to go further with an ordinance. You can have that kind of language in there to, you know, to address some of those specific issues.
But can, is there any ordinance that waive 100% no cost? I mean, because somebody brought up this, it's not a change, the average person, but somebody has five or eight, 10 bags, they walk out paying an extra dollar or two for their groceries than they were before.
Do you have the power to change in that ordinance to look at five and above? If that's the case, a lot of the stores will have the reusable bags and actually are utilizing those, giving them away at no cost, because they're actually using them as an advertising opportunity. And so to answer your question, certainly that could be addressed in an ordinance when it came back to really look at the justification. I hear a lot of that, well, gee, I'll be walking out with five or six or seven bags. Sometimes I know that's certainly something that could be addressed. It doesn't seem to have come up to be a major problem in the other cities or the counties, but it is, I appreciate pointing that out. And then in closing, I know you've --
I think we have --
Oh, excuse me.
The model ordinance that we're going to base this on, and I appreciate you saying that then we'll have an opportunity, as the SEQA comes forward, I'm sorry, to further discuss this and review it and look at other models, but -- and there, I just lost my question. No, I didn't. In Santa Barbara, the 10,000 square foot, what is a typical 7-Eleven or AMPM square footage? I mean, would they be exempt from this? I just see those kind of stores probably generating as much use in plastic bags. I could be wrong.
That's a very good question. Some of them are about 8,000 square feet, very close to that number, depending on the back storage areas and things like that. That's what generally is happening is that when, basically, they're almost standing out, as in some of the cities where it's been, they've made it as an effort to be part of the community and to do away with the plastic bags themselves.
I think that's great. I think a good corporate --
It almost, you stand, you're conspicuous by your consumption, so to speak.
Right, right.
And I just, in closing, wanted to say that we have documented evidence along, and you'll hear a little, the next item on the Ventura River Parkway Plan, but there's about 10 storm drains in the city of Ventura that were studied as part of a TMDL program, and four of them are empty into the Ventura River. Almost 87% of the items that were documented, and there were both plastic bottles, plastic bags, and styrofoam. And one of the issues certainly the city of Ventura has to deal with is, will be a lot of the thrift stores, a lot of the stores in the downtown, the amount of plastic bags utilized there, and they're basically single-use and discarded, and you can see them. And it's very close, three blocks to the river. And so that has actually, which is why the stormwater TMDL is being addressed, is if we can help reduce the opportunities at the source of some of this trash, it shows, number one, that there's a major effort. And when you go to do a TMDL, if you basically say, well, gee, you know, there's nothing we can do about it, and throw your hands in the air, certainly there's an opportunity for fining. If you, I'm not saying, but if you can be, jurisdictions and the regulators look at the fact that you're making an effort in some way to reduce it at the source, and that helps tremendously in regards to the funding.
And that's one of the first phases, I think, that TMDL has to do, right? Mr. Kapusik, I was talking to Jeff Pratt about that, and that's one of the first phases to, is to get rid of all that trash, right, is the beginning phase of the TMDL phases.
Yes, and we've seen that both, I think, in all jurisdictions across the state now, with water quality, when they have the opportunity, they are actually putting, they're both on, as you know, all the different elements and pollutants, they're actually putting a value on it and saying you have an opportunity to reduce it if you can and at the source. And one of the things, and I think this board certainly, as a county board, recognizes, there's a case in Los Angeles County right now that's addressing the fact that whether the county, the stormwater folks, or the watershed protection district, in this case in Ventura County, is actually responsible for what comes out the end of the pipe, as opposed to what goes at the very top end of the pipe. So this would give cities like Fillmore, certainly Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, any of those that wanted to realize that they're part of a problem because the oil, Seaco, does come down into the ocean, there is an opportunity for Epsom to just take what you've put in place and be able to cobble onto this and recognize if they were getting addressed as a problem, this is a way to solve it. So definitely, thank you.
Thank you. Chair Zeragoza, you're absolutely spot on. It's sort of distilled into this general approach. Stewardship is superior to downstream janitors, which is not to say that there isn't a role for that, but we're all about trying to deal with upstream, up watershed, at the point of generation, at the source, to either not create the problem in the first place, deal with it in a different way than we historically have dealt with it, and recognizing that no matter what we do with it, there is downstream and years later impact. And so that is more difficult a challenge, but from a lifecycle standpoint, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, from an integrative environmental resource standpoint, that is a superior public policy goal to try to make happen.
Thank you for that. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Okay, we've got a --
Mr. Brennan, so.
A point?
As somebody from the city council out here in Ventura, what is the situation as a city that we're putting more receptacles for trash and everything out? So that, we talk so much about this, I'm just curious, you're just finding the average person to throw it in the ground, or is there, I mean, most people I see walk by and drop stuff in a trash can. So what's the, what is the situation? Do we need as cities, do we need to do more things? Not just only banning stuff, but, I mean, what is the issue here? I mean, as cities get tighter, we don't seem to pick our trash up as quick, or what is it?
I would say, we all know it's personal responsibility.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, and thank you. That's really, I mean, we started that, I think, in school, in elementary school, when you took, but, you know, in situations, in public spaces, sometimes not having trash receptacles, and most people, we certainly go to Yosemite, and you go to these wonderful places, and you certainly wouldn't think of leaving your trash, they're a majority of people, but somehow in a public space, it's okay to do that. Well, gosh, they didn't provide me with a trash can, so I'm going to drop it. But the bottom line is, you know, we, like anything, but we get judged on, the regulators are saying, like it or not, you've got to do something beyond education because this is not working. And I know the Watershed Protection District, over five years, has been ads and billboards and everything else about not just plastic bags, but trash and waste, and whatever you put into, you know, whatever is in your driveway washes into the curb, and gutters ends up, and the storm drain ends up in the ocean. That's been a huge thing, and I want to thank Surf Rider for really, back in the early 90s, really waking people up to the fact that what you did at your front door ended up down in the ocean. But it does, it's a combination of both.
I agree, because that education seems to work. A lot of people, I don't want to do that because I washed my driveway off, it's going to, so they're careful of what they do. And I'm just curious if we as cities are not putting up enough places saying, you know, put it in the trash can, because I think where they are, they do put it in. Is that?
We find that sometimes that's the case. Sometimes they get away. I mean, there's, it's not about just throwing it on the ground. You can have it in the back of your pickup truck or something like that, and it blows out. I mean, we always have seen the wonderful, the plastic bag that made it to the ocean that finally got free. I mean, it fell out of a plastic bag. I know it sounds funny, but the realization is that that's going somewhere. And I would only say plastics in general, and the plastics industry has gotten a lot more aware of what they're putting in the plastic and the plastic bottles also. So the industries, and I think the people have become responsible, I think Matt touched on a very good point, and that is that the grocery associations actually came out in favor of the state. They're happy with a level playing field across the state. And as importantly, as I said earlier, their opportunity to give away free bags that have advertisements on the front of, it's a golden opportunity for them also. But sure, it starts with personal responsibility, but when that doesn't happen, I mean, government has to step in when it still becomes a problem. And hopefully, we're able to reduce it at the source, and that addresses it.
When I was with the Ochsard City Council, also, we had AB 939, which is something else now, and one of the components is education, use, reuse, and recycle. And we went out to the schools and talked to the kids and talked to, also, neighborhood council meetings, and talked to the parents and so forth about recycling, about throwing the trash into the containers, and about sweeping their own curbs, and et cetera, et cetera. So that education is there in many, many cities. I know in the city of Ochsard there is, because the fact, in my other life, I was in charge of recycling, use, reuse, and recycle under AB 939. So that was, one of the major components was to educate. So, and that's extremely important, too.
Well, Honorable Chair, Madam Clerk, I want to thank you for your patience on this item. I know we were set up for a time certain, but I think really a great opportunity to have a dialogue. Appreciate it.
Okay, we've got a first and a second on this item. Let's go and vote. Okay, and that's approved. Thank you so much, and thank all of you for being here today. Now, it's important that we take care of our environment. And one of the things I was going to share, because of time, I understand we're also getting quite a bit of debris from the tsunami that happened in Japan, so that's another, something that we have to think about. So thank you so much. Okay, our next item is item 21. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much. And I'm glad we were able to put these two items together. Because I think many of the people would want to be here for both, and it's much more convenient to do that. We had a full house in this boardroom on July 18th, when governmental agencies and non-governmental agencies came together to talk about the Ventura River Parkway Project and the various agency's support for that project. And similar to the Santa Clara River Parkway Project, this is a great opportunity for conservation, for recreation, for tourism, for enhancement of the river overall. And essentially, the action today is simply to ask the board to support in concept, as we did with the Santa Clara River, to support in concept this Ventura River Parkway Project. It is a project that is really starting to get momentum in the Ventura River watershed area. The meeting, one of the things that was emphasized is that this is not a project that is an eminent domain project, it's going to be a cooperative, collaborative project. Property owners are voluntarily going to participate in it. But it is a wonderful opportunity to reconnect the city of Ventura with the river and to reconnect the beach all the way to the mountains with recreation opportunities going all the way up. So this is the beginning of that, and the second part of the board's recommended action today is to direct the CEO's office to try to streamline as much as possible conservation easements. Conservation easements are almost always by their nature a pro-environmental action because you're going to be preserving that land. And so where there's clearly not going to be a negative environmental impact to the extent that we can streamline the approval process, these are usually non-governmental agencies that are engaging in these conservation easements. So those are the two recommended actions that we have here today, and I look forward to hearing the public comment before making the motion.
And have some public speakers, and in three minutes, we'll start off with Lisa Woodburn, and followed by Mr. Turley.
Good morning. I'm here to encourage you to support Supervisor Bennett's direction to staff to explore streamlining the conservation subdivision process. However, I'm asking that you broaden the scope of that study to also include large lot subdivisions done solely for estate planning purposes. These are done by family farmers who would like to subdivide in order to keep their farm in the family. They have no intention of developing lots, yet they are required to prepare costly studies, identify building pads, and put in access roads to fire department standards. I ask that you direct staff to also explore a process that would allow these property owners to defer these costly reports and improvements until the time of development. I also agree with Supervisor Bennett that the overall process, that the overall planning process can and should be abbreviated. However, we are finding problems also occur during the prior to recordation stage. That's the time after a project is approved and planning, but it's before a map is recorded. There's restrictive covenant language that requires property owners to agree to unrestricted access of their property and severely limits the use of their property. There's a shared water agreement condition that requires the county to be a party to agreements between private property owners. These regulations and restrictions on their property rights discourage property owners from entering into the conservation subdivision process. Therefore, I encourage your board to also ask staff to investigate the restrictive covenant language and prior to recordation condition language as well. If these are not changed, property owners will continue to be hesitant to enter into the conservation subdivision process. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Turley, followed by Kevin Terrisi.
Good morning again. I highly, highly support the idea of a Ventura River Parkway. I took a tour, they held, friends of the Ventura River held an open house down there, and I took a walking tour of the river, and it was such a beautiful, beautiful place. And I think it'd be, this Ventura River Parkway would be beneficial to the county, especially to the residents on the avenue who don't have, who have a lack of open space, and I think they would really appreciate this open space. And I think this would add tourist dollars to the county, as well as to the city of Ventura. And I just would love the county to support this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kevin, and then followed by Kathy Brimmer.
Chairman, CEO Powers, members of the board. My name is Kevin. Chairman, CEO Powers, members of the board. My name is Kevin Clarisi, and I'm the director of the Downtown Ventura Partners. And I want to thank Supervisor Bennett for bringing this forward and entertaining it. And I know I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo some comments that we urge you to support this. It's exciting. I'm here to sort of speak on behalf of the 300-plus business owners in downtown, and dozens of other residents who support the River Parkway plan. The benefits of this are many. And, you know, I think Supervisor Bennett said really well, this is a real chance to reconnect our community with an underutilized asset, and a chance to, to go beyond just that, you know. And I think, in the future, later today, I'm part of a meeting that we're gonna talk about logistics of how to remove some of the illegal encampments that are down there. And that's been a real challenge for a lot of years. And to me, what's exciting about the Parkway plan is, not only it would have recreational amenities and tourism amenities, but it's part of the solution to clean up that area and keep it clean. The best, I'm convinced the best way to do that is by activating it. Some of the illegal encampments, the reason they're down there is because it's been a place to hide, it's been a place to escape. And I think we combat that by making it a place that people want to come and spend time in, and those camps will go away. So I want to thank you guys for considering this and supporting it. And they don't let me out of downtown too often, so I do want to throw a quick, quick plug to Supervisor Bennett, to you and your staff. Cindy Cantle, Seva Offerman, and Brian Bennett have been just a real pleasure to work with, and we thank them greatly. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, Kathy Brimmer, followed by Lee Sherman.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you very much for your time. I'm also here to express support for Supervisor Bennett's recommended policy consideration, to express support for the Ventura River Parkway in concept. Since many of you weren't here, though Supervisor Bennett very carefully went through what happened on the 18th, since many of you weren't here, we had a very successful rollout event. We had representatives here for, from Trust for Public Land, from the California Coastal Conservancy, they presented benefits of River Parkways across the nation, examples of successful parkways, and what they've done for their communities. A graduate advisor from Cal Poly, Pomona, Department of Landscape Architecture, Studio 606, presented her student's vision plan, emphasizing that the plan is a point of discussion, a point for the beginning of a discussion of what we, the residents of Ventura, visualize for the future of our river. And we know this is a project that will take years' perseverance, political will, and funding. Other communities have been so successful, Ventura can only gain from the extraordinary recreational opportunities, improved water quality, habitat restoration, and tourism that a River Parkway will bring to our community. With this in mind, the streamlining of conservation subdivisions will also give property owners who wish to create conservation parcels much easier process to follow. Perhaps owners who have wished to place land into conservation, but were exasperated by the process which we just heard about, will be more likely to pursue them once the steps are streamlined. It is just possible that this improvement will benefit the Ventura River Parkway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lee Sherman.
Hi there. On behalf of the Ventura Hillside Conservancy, I am here to express our support for Supervisor Bennett's proposed policy position regarding development of a Ventura River Parkway. Under agenda item 21 of today's meeting, we're requesting the board adopt a policy position of conceptually supporting creation of the Parkway, as well as directing the staff to streamline the processing of conservation subdivisions. That would be a really great thing for us as a land trust. We encourage you guys to move forward with these recommendations. As a land trust focused on conserving open space in the Ventura area, the Conservancy is playing a significant role in the creation of the Parkway. We've recently acquired properties along the Lower River, which we are currently implementing restoration projects, educational programs, and recreational access. We also are a key supporter of the Friends of the Ventura River, an umbrella group of public agencies and nonprofits working together on reconnecting the city of Ventura to this important waterway, protecting floodplain function and water quality, restoring critical habitat for threatened and endangered species, and providing public recreation, education, and local business opportunities. I'd like to thank Mr. Turley for mentioning the tour that he took with the picnic that we arranged down there back in June. And I'd like to mention the fact that that tour was, we had law enforcement escort us. And I don't know if anybody's ever been down there, but I wouldn't recommend going down there without law enforcement right now. There is a great deal of drug sales, drug manufacture, prostitution, petty theft, a lot of crime that goes on down there. There's a lot of theft that happens at the RV park, a lot of vandalism of Lower River businesses. And I don't know if anybody was with me for three hours on the 101 this Sunday, but, you know, they also set fires down there, and that's something that really, we're trying to address. Kevin mentioned the task force that we're working on with other various partners with the city, with a lot of the social services agencies, such as the Salvation Army, Turning Point Foundation, Project Understanding. You know, there's people that have been down there a long, long time, that feel really welcome and entitled to being down there. But through the theme of reconnection, where we're seeking to get people more interested in going back down there, we used to have this as a resource. Before the 33 went in, a lot of the roads along the avenue ended at the river. There were swimming holes there, people learned to swim there, they learned to fish there, they recreated down there. Right now, I wouldn't let anybody go down there to do that, and we really need to change that as a city. I mean, that's the entrance to our town, that's a big part of, you know, an economic driver for the county. And so I really encourage us to move forward with this program.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman.
Thanks.
I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there someone else? Okay. Go ahead and state your name.
Good evening. Good morning. My name is Diana Underhill, and I'm here today to speak for the Friends of the Ventura River. As Lee had just mentioned, Friends is an umbrella organization that's made up of individuals, local groups, businesses, and government agencies that support the Ventura River Parkway concept. We would really like to thank Supervisor Bennett for bringing these recommendations to your board today. Recreationally, environmentally, and economically, the creation of a 16-mile Ventura River Parkway will be a boon to our region. A Ventura River Parkway will help protect water quality and restore critical habitat. It will offer safe and healthy public recreation and educational opportunities that will enhance our area's quality of life. It will attract visitors who will help support our local jobs and businesses. In fact, a recent study found that a 23-mile American River Parkway generated more than $364 million annually for the Sacramento region. Additionally, streamlining the processing of conservation easements will greatly help the creation of the Ventura River Parkway and other similar public benefit projects. The conservation subdivisions will be dedicated to repair and conservation, which will protect biodiversity, restore wildlife corridors, and improve water quality. Due to the environmentally beneficial nature of these conservation easements, a more expedited and less costly processing is justified. The Friends of the Ventura River want to thank this board for considering these recommendations, and urge you to adopt a policy position of supporting the Ventura River Parkway concept and streamlining the conservation easement process, because River Parkways are enormous public benefit projects that benefit people and businesses and tourism, as well as the environment, wildlife, and water quality. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for sharing. Supervisor Bennett.
It's just, it's a pleasure to make the motion that we move forward with the Ventura River Parkway project. For generations to come, people will benefit in Ventura. And I use this analogy at the July 18th meeting, but somebody had the concept for Central Park for New York, and it was, in the long run, a great benefit for New York. And I would hope that generations from now, people look back and say, this was a great concept that people came up with. So I applaud everybody who pushed this project in its infancy, so it's now at this point where it can have the momentum to potentially be adopted in concept by the board of supervisors here, and it's one more step moving forward.
Supervisor Long.
Just, I certainly support this. I think the, the success of the Santa Clara River Parkway progress has been because it has been in full cooperation and work with the property owners, with the agencies, the Conservancy agencies, and moving ahead with engagement by the cities and all of us. So I, it takes everyone to have good, open dialogue, and discuss the values, and to reach voluntary support and agreement, engagement on it.
I appreciate you mentioning that, that it did pass out letters of support here from the Coastal Conservancy and other organizations that have identified their support for the project. Thank you.
Supervisor's point.
I understand the concept we're trying to do. The only thing that bothers me here is that we didn't see support from the landowners that all own that property. I mean, that would be a little bit different if we had that, because like Supervisor Long just said, you know, we had the support of those other people. It'd be great if they were here to support this. We did have one card on the yellow card that was concerned about dividing up their property. And the gentleman talked about the freedom that he had to swim and do all those things. I thought that was great. And the river. Did all those go away in Santa Clara? I mean, did all, is that gonna go away, the ability to use the river and being part of the river?
No.
I mean, I just want to make sure that that's not an issue. But my only concern is that we have one side's support. Where's the side of the, the landowners who want to do that? That own that 13, you know...
The Conservancy is a landowner.
Well, I understand that, but the whole rivers, there's other people that own that property, too. And that's my only concern, is that they were here and say, this is great, we'd love to do it, it's gonna be good. We have one person here saying, this is gonna dissect my property, it's gonna be more difficult, I'm gonna have more people, I already have vandalism, I have got trash, I've got nothing else. And I'm just curious, you know, from that, I understand the concept, and I, it's great to ride your bike down those, and you're right, you gotta clean up the river, and you gotta, you know, for the RV park that's getting people vandalism. I'm just curious, we just need both sides. And I think what Supervisor Long said was, the other side brought all the property owners, everybody together, and said, let's make this happen. I hate to have so much pressure, because Supervisor Bennett said, we don't want to be an intimate domain situation, and get everybody all excited. And when some property owners say, I don't really want to go down that path, it'd be nice to get them on board in the front, and not try to force this down. Some people say, that's my only concern about us not having those. It'd be great if we would have brought them here, even if they weren't 100%, at least they would have given us some concerns that we would, we'd see.
But this is conceptual support, you know, right? We're not putting it together. So Supervisor Bennett, or...
It is conceptual support. On July 18th, we had, we had this boardroom pact with property owners and others here. But I don't think it, I think it's very clear that...
Yeah, I think the conceptual support, you know, the creation is a key to, to the whole thing. Okay, we got a first and a second on this.
Yeah, I also support the motion. I think it is a really good example of collaboration. A lot of different partners came together on this. I think that is a wonderful beginning to a great vision. So I wish you well. It'll be good for the environment, it'll be good for tourism, and it's exactly what's needed.
And I want to thank all of you supporters that are here today, too. And Mr. Powers?
Just real quick, certainly understand the importance of supporting this exciting project. And in terms of the streamlining aspect, just want to mention that this dovetails nicely with the streamlining efforts of the Resource Management Agency. So that's something that I know that they've been working very hard on, especially the last couple of years, and will continue to build on that with this process.
It would also, I'm sorry, it would also be helpful if the board can get information on what actions are needed for that streamlining. I'd like to hear back on that, because...
Could we put, yeah, Supervisor Zaragoza's vote didn't get recorded there.
No. There it is. Okay. So that, so that is approved, and thank you all for being here today, and...
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate, appreciate your support.
Next time it comes, we get the landowners with it. Okay.
Our, our next item is item 22, and this is a public hearing regarding the proposed tax amendment to the coastal zone ordinance, CZO. And Kim, who, oh, who's making the presentation?
I'm making the presentation, but I think Chris wants to say something.
Chris? Okay. Chris is getting ready.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I am filling in for Kim Perhart, the pointy director, who is on vacation. My, my plan was to fill in very quietly, but I, after getting now involved in this for a few days, I wanted to make just a, an opening comment and a revision to the recommendation before I turn it over to Katie for the, for the formal presentation. You received a memo yesterday with some additional revisions that were based on discussions we've had with COLAB over the last month. And as is reported in the staff report, we've had a lot of very good discussions with COLAB, both at the Planning Commission and since that time, very productive. However, the change that is within the memo you received yesterday related to the fees section, spoke with County Council's office late yesterday, after they reviewed the memo, raised, I thought, some very good questions and some interesting points about it. And without dwelling on it too much, you're all aware that the board adopts fee schedules every year. We also have a reimbursement agreement that all of our applicants sign. All of those touch on fees, how they're paid, what the process is. And looking at these last, these last changes, my recommendation to you, based on my discussions with County Council, is that we set aside any changes to the fee section at this point. We keep the language as it currently reads today, and that we take the time within the Phase Two portion of this work, and, and staff will present that to you a little bit more in detail. But we spend the time to make sure that we don't have some language in here that's gonna create some problems for us administratively with our reimbursement agreement and our fee schedules and such that the board reviews. So I just wanted to get that out in front of the board here before the staff presentation, and let you know of that revision to our recommendation.
Thank you, Chris. Okay.
Okay. Good morning, Supervisors. Mr. Powers, I am Katie Matchit with the Planning Division. I'm gonna present this ordinance amendment, which is ZN 12 0002. A little bit of background to start out with. The purpose of these amendments are to address some of the problems with our coastal zoning ordinance today. We haven't had a major update to our coastal zoning ordinance since 1987. So our ordinance isn't consistent entirely with the Coastal Act today and its related standards, and it's out of sync with some of the changes to technology and to county procedures that have happened since 1987. Some of that ordinance language is confusing to staff and to coastal residents, and the result of that is that we have less efficient processing of our coastal permits, and just general uncertainty for our coastal residents as they process permits for uses in the coastal zone. So the update will help ensure that our coastal regulations are consistent with the Coastal Act and with its related standards, that they reflect updates to laws, technology, and procedures in the coastal zone, that they're accurate, that they're consistent, and easier for everyone to use, and that they provide greater clarity for staff, for our customers and decision-makers, to help streamline the coastal permitting process. We've divided this project into two phases. The first is Phase One, that's the current amendment before you today. We also have a second phase planned. That's going to include some of the more substantive policy changes. So some of the issue areas we might be looking at as part of Phase Two would include the coastal trail, our film permitting regulations. We want to look at bringing some tree protection regulations into the coastal zoning ordinance. We have them today in our non-coastal zoning ordinance, but not in the coastal zoning ordinance. And then looking at some of the other standards that we have today in our non-coastal zoning ordinance, and bringing those into our coastal zoning ordinance. This project is funded through the Coastal Impact Assistance Program. We have about a $600,000 grant to amend our local coastal program, which includes these Phase One amendments. And then separately, we have about $250,000 to look at coastal biological issues. We have been working very closely with the Coastal Commission staff as we develop this proposed amendment, to ensure that the amendment is consistent with the Coastal Act, and also to help shorten the time to process this amendment with the Coastal Commission. That process can take sometimes a year or more, so we hope that by working with Coastal Commission staff, we'll be able to shorten that time to process, and ultimately create an amendment that can be adopted.
And Katie, the Coastal Commission is working on expediting that process, right?
Exactly, right. We've been working with them, and the indication that we've had from staff is that they will very quickly be able to process and bring this hearing to the Coastal Commission, unlike their sometimes more typical schedule of a year. So we do plan to include some more extensive public outreach as part of the future amendment, the next phase of this process. We're still developing what that... We're still developing what that program might look like, but we anticipate holding evening and weekend meetings throughout the coastal zone to gather some initial public input on possible amendments, and then having some more focused group meetings with perhaps technical, business, or advisory groups in the coastal zone, and finally additional meetings to present any proposed amendment language to folks in the coastal zone. A little bit about coastal regulations generally. So this amendment would apply to all unincorporated parcels within the coastal zones, that's those areas that are shown kind of in the darker blue there on this map. Any amendment needs to be consistent with the purpose of the Coastal Act itself, which identifies five key goals for the coast. They are to maintain and enhance the quality of the coastal environment, assure a balanced utilization of coastal resources, to maximize public access and recreation along the coast, and to prioritize coastal-dependent development over other types of development. So that's development that actually depends on the waters of the tidelines to function. And finally, to cooperate with local governments as they implement the Coastal Act. The amendment process is fairly lengthy. It started with a recommendation from the Planning Commission to your board for potential approval of the amendments, which is where we are today. From here, if you approve the proposed amendment, they would go to the Coastal Commission for certification. At that point, the Coastal Commission can actually recommend modifications or follow-up actions. And if they do that, those need to come back to your board for acceptance and to follow-up. And from there, the executive director of the Coastal Commission actually has to determine that your board's action is legally adequate, and then, and then the Coastal Commission has to concur with the executive director's determination, at which point the amendment would finally become effective. If the Coastal Commission doesn't have any modifications or follow-up actions, we can skip those last three steps, but as you can see, it's still a pretty lengthy process to process a coastal zoning ordinance amendment. Okay. Okay. So I'm going to talk about a couple of the key changes as part of the proposed amendments, and then if you have more specific questions, I can answer those at the end of the presentation. In general, the proposed amendments include a lot of wording and punctuation changes that don't affect the ordinance meeting, so misspellings, incorrect section references, those sorts of things. We've also proposed to replace outdated or undefined terms with more current and defined terms. We've done a lot of reorganization for clarity, which will generally help streamline the permit process. And then we propose a lot of revisions just to reflect current laws, current technologies, and procedures in the coastal zone. Here's an example of a proposed amendment to improve clarity in the ordinance. We've proposed adding this diagram to our definitions section that would show the different type of lot lines, which helps everyone to understand the location of the different stepbacks on properties. We've also proposed updating the clear-site triangle requirements to reflect the current standards, which are actually set at the federal level. So we've updated those design requirements. We've added this little diagram so that everyone understands what a clear-site triangle actually We've proposed to eliminate a lot of the regulations for satellite dish antennas to reflect some of the changes in that technology that have occurred since 1987. So back in the 80s, satellite dish antennas were those big bulky structures, maybe 10 or 12 feet wide. Today, they look more like the little antenna there in the picture. So this improves consistency with federal policy, which actually preamps us from regulating those kind of smaller satellite dish antennas. We've made some changes to simplify our height standards in the RB and RBH zones, so we've not modified the allowable building envelope or changed the allowable roof structures. We simply simplified the language so it's clear what the height limits should be in those zones. So our current ordinance allows a 25-foot flat-roofed building, and then on top of that, you could build a 3-foot-high solid parapet wall, which from a visual perspective looks exactly the same as a 28-foot flat-roofed building. So we've eliminated any distinction between those two things that's implied in the ordinance and just said beneath that 28-foot height limit, the height of the individual building elements is not really relevant. One of the areas where we've proposed a lot of changes is our use matrix. So we've removed all those funny little symbols that are in our matrix today, and we've replaced them with abbreviations. And we've done some reordering of headings and the subheadings in our ordinance. And then we've added a legend at the bottom of each page that has the use matrix, so in case you don't know what the color coding or the abbreviation stand for, you can take a look there. We've also brought in any permitting requirements that might appear in other sections of our ordinance. So for example, right now, some of our film permit requirements actually appear in a completely separate section of our ordinance, which is confusing for someone who doesn't know to go and look there. So we've just, we've not changed those permitting requirements, but we have brought them into the use matrix, so all the permit requirements are in one place. We've made a lot of clarifications to the exemptions and categorical exclusion sections of the ordinance to help everyone understand clearly what uses are exempt from coastal development permit requirements and help ensure that those exemptions aren't granted or withheld incorrectly. So we've clarified the source of all of those exemptions. We've actually cited it in the draft ordinance language. We've brought in all of the exemptions that are in the Coastal Act today, so we include most of those in our ordinance today. We've left a couple of them out, so we've actually brought them into our draft ordinance language, so they're all in one place. And we've used the exact language from the Coastal Act as we've described those exemptions. And then we've added references to our use matrix so that people using the use matrix can understand that there might be an exemption for a use that they're considering. We've proposed adding a process to waive public hearing requirements for what are called minor developments. Those are developments that are consistent with our local coastal program, that they require only a planned development permit or a public works permit, and they don't have the possibility of adversely affecting coastal resources or access. This is a process that's actually in the Coastal Act today but isn't in our ordinance because it was adopted after we did our last major update to our ordinance. And it's just intended to shorten the time to process permits in the coastal zone. So some types of uses that might qualify could be some types of animal husbandry, improvements to single-family dwellings, restaurants, repair and maintenance activities. These are the types of uses that might fall under the category of minor developments and possibly qualify for this waiver. We've also proposed allowing concurrent entitlement applications for properties that have violations. So today, under our current ordinance, no entitlements can be processed on a property that has a violation except for the one entitlement to abate that violation. But the proposed amendments would actually permit concurrent processing of additional entitlements provided at least one of those entitlements abates the violation. And that just allows for more efficient land use processing of land use permits, so you can package all of your entitlements into one process as opposed to separate processes. All right. In terms of environmental review, this amendment is a project subject to review, but it's exempt under CEQA's general rule, which states that CEQA only applies to projects that have the potential to cause a significant impact on the environment, and that projects such as this that cannot possibly have a significant impact on the environment are exempt from CEQA. Noticing for coastal ordinance amendments is a little more extensive than for a typical ordinance amendment. We're required to publish a detailed summary in the Ventura County Star and also provide review drafts of all of the proposed amendments six weeks prior to this hearing at multiple locations throughout the county, libraries, the Coastal Commission offices, here at the county offices. We also posted those drafts online, and then we needed to provide the notice to different state and local agencies that could potentially be affected by the proposed changes. The bulk of the public comments we did receive to date on this ordinance have been from COLAB. They did provide a comment letter and testimony at our Planning Commission hearing and a comment letter after the Planning Commission hearing on the revised amendments. And those are, I believe, Exhibits A and B in your board packet. One of their key comments was that public outreach on the amendment was inadequate. But as I mentioned, we did comply with all of the noticing requirements in the Coastal Act for coastal zoning ordinance amendments. We did also meet with COLAB during the hearing process. And we do have broader outreach planned for the future amendments that may include more substantive policy changes. One of the issues right now is that many of the changes we proposed are in response to changes to state law, and so we have limited ability to make any changes in response to public input when the requirements are actually per state law.
So Phase One is a cleanup, and Phase Two is going to be more detailed? Is that...
Exactly. Yes. COLAB did actually ask for a couple other changes, that we clarify the exemption section in the use matrix and that we modify the colors of that matrix so that when it prints in black and white, it's clear what the different colors might mean, and provide a little bit of additional information in terms of the proposed amendments and associated documents. And so we did make those changes and provide that information as Exhibits, your board packet, and online prior to the hearing. But they continue to have concerns that some of the amendments may have implications for the farming and ranching community, in particular, some of the changes related to the definitions of prime agriculture, as Chris mentioned, the appeal process for billing disputes, and the exemption for crop production. We have addressed all of those concerns in a response letter, which is Exhibit 11. We also met with COLAB on the 27th, that was last Friday, to discuss some of those concerns. And we will be working, as Chris mentioned, to resolve that administrative process, to resolve billing disputes as part of the second phase of this project. We did make one change to clarify that crop production is exempt from all permit requirements as it is in the current ordinance, and we wanted to make sure that was abundantly clear in the ordinance. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the draft amendments. They did ask for a couple small things to be considered as part of Phase Two, for example, clarifying the definition of inoperative vehicle. And their recommendations were that your board find the amendments are exempt from CEQA, that they are in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare, that they're consistent with the general plan, the coastal area plan, and good zoning practice, that you actually adopt the amendments and specify that the clerk of the board be the custodian of the public record. And that's everything for now.
Any questions?
That's a lot, huh?
Yes. Yes, it was.
You know, you do a great job explaining. You really do.
Thanks. Thank you.
Can I just ask you one question?
Sure.
And I was going through a couple of these that I think Kim sent back. This farm worker dwelling situation.
Mm-hmm.
It sounded like you clarified it. I guess my only thing is if somebody builds farm worker dwelling and they go for five years or 10 years and they have whatever going on, then all of a sudden, their animals are off the property and they don't have anybody in there. What is the, you just can't have anybody in the property be used at that time? Is that what they're saying?
The regulations relating to dwelling are more to do with who's, is in the property and less to do with what might happen once they leave. I don't know if you have any other...
Well, only because it says verification of animal caretakers, your farm workers employed are required.
Right.
I'm just saying, all of a sudden, let's say you've got something out there and all, you know, this drought came, we got rid of all of our animals, and nobody's in the property.
Okay.
It's not being used. But I'm just saying, is there something that has to be done with the property, or can it sit until something happens again? Or what is the process? I know that was one of the questions that COLAB had. If I build a farm worker, then I don't use a farm worker for a period of time, am I required to do something with this product because there's a verification requirement every year?
Mm-hmm. I believe that they would, that would be allowed, provided no one's living in it, that they would be allowed to continue to have that structure on their property, and then if they were to use it to get, you know, the animals come back or the drought is over, someone would then be allowed to live there again.
For future, I mean, for future.
Yeah, that's something. I know you couldn't rent it out. I just, they were just concerned that there would be something.
Uh-huh.
Because it's verification, okay, for two years now you haven't done anything.
Right.
We're just not going to allow you to have an empty property piece of...
Right.
You know, I was just curious if there's something in there that, that was a concern. And it just didn't seem like it got answered.
We've got a staff...
Supervisor Fory, through the chair. That could be a gap in our current regulations. I'm not 100% certain. But it's an interesting question, what happens if the actual business operation in the property should change? One option that that landowner would have, depending on what else they have on their property, would be to apply, to change that dwelling unit to a second dwelling unit, for example. This is certainly something we can look at in Phase Two if there's a gap in our existing regulations, but the purpose of the regulations is just to make sure that we have adequate dwellings for farm workers and animal caretakers in the county.
And I agree, and I thought that was good. It was just when you put that verification in there, it was just, we verified, verified, now what do we do? It hasn't, it's not doing it.
Right.
We just didn't have, like you said, you may apply if you're going to go long-term and change what you do on this property and/or whatever. It's just as laws or something, it just doesn't leave some grayness there that gets somebody, you know, I don't want to be in trouble with something, you know, I spent, because we, something happened to me, I changed my operation. What else can I do? Or you have the right for, you know, for five years not to do anything with it, and then after that, you need to apply to do something, you know, something like that.
I would agree that that's an interesting question. I don't believe our regulations even address that question right now, and we'll be happy to take a look at that in Phase Two.
Right. If the verification wasn't, it wouldn't have been an issue, but since you're required by law to verify, then you, there's got to be a response to that verification.
It does bring up the question. I agree.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing. And I have John Hecht, John...
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
Thank you very much for allowing a few minutes here. John Hecht, today I'm representing COLAB. I'm on their board. Lynn Jensen sends your regret. She's on vacation today. So I wanted to make just a few comments. First of all, you know, one of the things that COLAB really tries to do is to look at the new regulations and ensure that, you know, where possible, they result in a reduction of paperwork and a reduction of permit requirements. And, you know, as staff said, we've been working with them on that, and we really appreciate that. We think we've made a lot of good progress on that. Specifically with these changes, our concern was focused on the agricultural community, that important economic engine to Ventura County, and to ensure that these changes didn't have any negative effects on the ag community, and if there were policy changes, that they were appropriately reviewed by APAC, which is the venue to look at that. Specifically on the process, we did, this did come to our attention, you know, fairly shortly before the Planning Commission hearing. So I think if we had a "let's learn from it" comment, it would be great to have, you know, a little bit more time before then. Once we were engaged, we prepared a letter, staff responded very quickly to that, and so we appreciate that. One of the things that is really important and that we found in our review is that there are many things that were typographical and other things that were kind of policy. And it was kind of tough to weed out what were the policy ones and what were the typographical ones. And really, in this two-phase process, the concept, which is a good one, is that all the policy, or the typographical is Phase One and the policy is Phase Two. So, you know, in the future, and we look forward to working with the staff on the Phase Two, but the policy where it needs to be dealt with on a policy level should be done, and that should be clearly identified. We did find up a couple of issues that were identified in the RADA. Specifically, there was an exemption in the table that listed crop production is requiring a permit. And we met with staff last week, and they clarified, "No, that was a mistake. We didn't mean to do that. It's exempt," which is good. And as I said, you know, staff responded quickly to our concerns. We had the month of July, and we had some staffing issues, so we didn't get to do the detailed review that we would like to have done. All the issues that we've raised to date, you know, have been addressed by staff to the point where we're okay, and we understand that staff has a schedule to move this to the Coastal Commission because of their schedule. So we'd love to have more time, but we also understand that staff has committed to working with us during that time if significant issues come up, and they'll deal with it. If the board chooses to have a second reading and give us 30 days, we promise to use the time wisely and to make those, to make any reviews. And if anything goes, needs to go to APAC, that would also give them time to look at And we look forward to really the engagement in Phase Two and that public outreach process. And again, looking back, if there'd been a little bit of that public outreach early on in this, we would have, you know, probably not necessarily had to go through some of the comment letters we did. But staff has done a good job of working with us and of responding to the questions we identified. The fee change, we actually kind of liked the fee change with the modifications we had, so it's kind of unfortunate that's going to Phase Two, but we understand the concerns. So with that, any questions? And again, thanks for working with us.
Go ahead.
Okay. John, you're comfortable where you're at now? I know you'd like some more time to go through. I know it's a 140-page document, and there's still some more...
Yeah, we'd always like more time, but we're comfortable and understand the process. Staff explained to us that it's a two-phase process, and they've committed that if we find something next week that really is a serious issue, we'll sit down and talk about it.
And I think they showed their commitment. I talked to Lynn last week, and we needed some stuff, and they immediately got together and made that work. And Chris, and I appreciate you being involved in some of that yourself. And so I think we can work through, and I know your goal at the end is probably, hopefully, the same as planning.
Absolutely.
We've got a farming community out here. It's almost, we saw the other day, $2 billion. We want to make sure they can still can do what they can do and find a way to meet the requirements, and I think that's what we've seen. the requirements, and I think that's what we've seen. And I know it's a lot of work from your standpoint, and I appreciate the other side. So it looks like we're slowly moving forward on that and some of those things. So, okay, well, that's good. You got the commitment, then we'll hold them to it, and we'll make...
And thank you for working with staff, you appreciate that.
And I also want to compliment COLAB on some, some of the suggestions have really assisted, for example, listing the exceptions to the planned developments and, you know, getting some more clarity, and the whole point of this is to make this simpler, easier to enforce, so appreciate the comments.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing, and what's the pleasure of the board?
I really compliment staff on this. I remember commenting a few years back about the hieroglyphics, you know, it's hard to figure out, the circles with the dot in the middle and the slash across means such and such, but to actually kind of have these acronyms now makes it a lot simpler, a lot easier to read, so I think that's a huge addition, I appreciate that. I also, Supervisor Foye and I were both acknowledging the idea of being able to have concurrent processing. If you have a current violation, you can fix that violation, as long as you're fixing that violation, you can continue processing instead of everything coming to a halt. So I think that's an assist for the business community and will help us get those violations taken care of also. There's a couple of things that I'd like to see when we're talking about in the next stages, which are the more policy ones. One is something that I've been pursuing for a while, which is trying to get an expanded notification area in the rural areas. Areas, for example, in Yerba Buena, the houses are pretty far apart, so if there's a, you know, a big grading proposal, maybe one house might get noticed when it's all along a street and it is still a, a community out there. So if we can incorporate that into the, the next policy look, I would like to see that. And then also seeing what we particularly have out in the coastal section too is some illegal or non-conforming mother-in-law units or second dwelling units that were put in probably back in the, you know, decades and decades ago. If there's some way that we can work on some kind of amnesty program where we can help these people, bring them in and for less cost, get these violations taken care of, I think that would be a real benefit. It would help them, you know, get within our building codes, but also maybe give us some more dwelling units that we can look at in terms of our arena numbers. So those are two things that I'd like to see us address.
Okay, and thank you, staff, for an excellent presentation, and...
Let me make just one more comment. I too appreciate, you know, all the stuff. When you think about this big document, you've been working on, what, a year and a half or something on this whole thing, and the idea that goes out, I know, come from the industry, the insurance side, it's very complicated too. And one of the things we used to do a lot of it, we'd spend months and months trying to put stuff together and say, you know, give this to a whole different group you don't even know, and let them read it, just so you get your eyes off it, somebody else does it, and I appreciate you willing to do that, because a lot of times, are they critical? No, they're just seen a little bit different than I do. You're trying to send something out that the average person can understand. We don't always understand everything you guys do. Pretty complicated what you're doing. So I really appreciate you doing that, because it does help the average person just try to understand the things, and so they can see it in a different way, and I think some of these things have happened. So again, I got to compliment you on willing to go through this and your quick reaction, and hopefully we can, Phase Two will have more of that, they'll be doing so. And I do, with Supervisor Parks, that idea that you have something, okay, that was going on, because a lot of times I find out there's something going on, there's a violation, and it only came up because somebody bought a property a couple years ago and they wanted to do something else, never knew the violation was there. So in the other sense, it can be probably even advantageous that we're helping you get what you want, just finish up this, at the end we can finally approve that, and maybe there's some ways to get things done even faster. But, you know, because a lot of people, it wasn't a pure violation just because it was something they'd, they'd purchased and it was already there, and they didn't even know about it. So again, my compliments, thanks for working hard to make all this happen.
Thank you, Chris. Michael?
Just to echo, I think it reflects well on all parties, COLAB, John, and Lynn spending so much time to try to make the document better, and staff are working, a lot of time and effort to get it started, get it to this point, and to work with COLAB to hear their concerns and address many of them in your work. And Katie, great job summarizing all that information in that short time.
And there's two phases too, you know, the first phase, you know, is to accuracy and consistency, to clean it up, and to follow the state statutes too, so I think that's extremely important that, that we do that too. So thank you for that.
I feel somewhat guilty sitting here, listening to all this laudatory compliments. Really, it is Katie, Matt, you did a terrific job, Rosemary, and of course, Kim worked very hard on that, and I think they've developed a very good, open dialogue with COLAB, and we expect to do that with other elements of the community in the second phase, so looking forward to that. Believe it or not, this was the easy phase of the process, so...
No, I believe it. I believe it, I think the next one will be. And the comment made about certainly to include APAC and the appropriate policy discussions, and also when you talk about amnesty program, as I'm, we've got a difficult one in my district right now, agree with that, where appropriate, but when you have structures that were, were built in 40s, 50s, 30s, and, and different building codes, we still have to look at the current building code, safety and compliance, and it's a challenge, it's a challenge, but appreciate the work.
Thank you. Okay, we'll second that. Okay, got a first and a second?
Could I ask, as maybe adjoining this motion, also to have staff look at what the City of Ventura has, because I know they looked at an amnesty kind of program with second dwelling units, and I think that would be helpful for us to have that information.
Yeah, the staff has taken note of that, and that's been approved, and thank you. So we're adjourned. That's it. (applause)[1688.33]